We're ready, alright. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council. Meeting in September twenty twenty five at seven AM here in the council chambers. I'd like to call the meeting to a order and ask you all to join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Alright, good evening and welcome. Welcome to everybody who is here in person, especially those who are celebrating their birthday, Councilor Hamilton. Greg Griffin, Peter Rottary. And for any of those who are watching online, either live or at a later point, so welcome, we appreciate you having me here. I'll ask our city administrator to help us out with a phone call. Counselor Jones, here. Counselor Hamilton, here. Counselor Garboden, here. Mayor Inhulki, here. Counselor Schultz, here. Counselor Slater, here. Counselor Torres, here. Alright, next on the item is number two or number three, we have some ceremonial items. The first is a donation to the North Bend K nine program from Eagle Furniture. So I will go ahead and ask our city administrator if we're gonna have our chief come up or how we wanted to proceed here.
We're actually gonna have Mr. Steve Nye come up, he's gonna introduce his colleagues and he wants to make a formal presentation to the council.
Would you like us to stand?
Right here, as it picks up and if you want to face the camera, the council, your choice.
Yeah, yeah, we'll come back here. Why Counselor Jones? So I'm Steve Nye, owner and operator for Eagles Furniture, and this is Terrence Scribbin, he's been with Engles for about ten years on support of my sales team. And this is Grace Pickett, she's a part of my admin team. So we started discussing what we could, what we wanted to get behind as far as a programmer locally. To potentially donate to, and Terrence came up with the idea to try to help out with the K nine unit that's, you know, it's been gone since two thousand seventeen, it's coming back after eight years. When I first heard about it, I was like, wow, so I told Terrence about it, he's like, that's so cool, and then, yeah. So Grace's, her dad is a sheriff for the Douglas County, so what's that?
State trooper.
State trooper, I'm sorry. So when it comes to, you know, public safety is super important for us, you know, being, you know, holding our own business. We really felt like if we had the opportunity to do something special, I could help get the program kicked off, I know other businesses here locally have done some neat things too, and individuals. So we would like to present the program with a five thousand dollar check.
Thanks very much. Hey council, you wanna do a photo?
Alright. Oh yes. No, 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 we got, we got this, this is all good. Very good. Alright, ready? Alright, one, two, three, here we go. Looking good, looking good, looking good. Thank you.
The council may just wanna hang Lucian here on the side.
Okay, alright, that was, well, thank you so much Eagles Furniture for investing in our community and such a generous donation, we really truly appreciate it, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that on that thermometer over there, that is, that type of donation is just sending us right there to the top, right? We're doing really great, so we really truly appreciate you. Next on the agenda is our heritage award presentation, and this is the Bay Area Chief of Commerce.
Yes, I'm there, we have with us the executive director Rosie Thomas and also Jaleen. Yeah, the T. Rojo, and if you all wanna come up here, and they also have with them Madam President, President of the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, I am Rosie Thomas with the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, and one of the ways that we honor our businesses is to not only celebrate new business, but to honor local businesses and entities that have been around for over fifty years. And of course, you guys turned a hundred and twenty-two, so we wanted to make sure that we honored the city of North Bend with a heritage award to hang on the hallways, and we brought Tracy Pierce with us, our president from Northwest Natural, and the president of the chamber this year, she was sorry she couldn't make it, so we brought her an F G. And we wanted to get to see you, Mayor.
Amazing, and I see her in the audience there, and then, what do you call this, the? Audience gallery? The gallery here, we have some longtime community members here as well. In fact, when I was in high school, Pat Chopiris was my advisor for the July Jubilee, and it's so hard to not accept an award on behalf of the city of North Bend without thanking you and acknowledging you for all the hard work that you have put into the city for over the years, so thank you. And again, you look around the room and you see the longevity of the employees in this room, and we have, you know, so many people, Counselor Slater just keeps coming back for more. He was mayor for quite a few years, and our new council members as well, so I think on behalf, everybody should be an effect, yeah. So we can go ahead and come on here, I'll let you come into the middle here, we'll get the council in, and I'll ask the city administrator, he's very good at orchestrating these photos, I definitely think you're awesome.
Yeah, I think, I may, I hope I have a mistake, I think I read your profile today, because I was going through and making sure they were right, and so you were a former chamber president one time, yes, no?
Yeah, chamber president two thousand two.
And the mayor was a former president, and so, and then you became executive director, and and so, yeah. Alright, yeah, a lot of chamber stuff, alright, let's see, we're gonna get to it right here. Alright, ready? Alright, here we go. Looking all great. I take about thirty of these, just because. Thank you.
Council will stay down here, we have C. Charlie on our agenda.
C. Charlie.
C. Charlie. Yes, it's not Santa Claus, it's not the Easter Bunny.
Okay.
But Will Q. C. Abracadabra.
Okay, so you have a new item on the agenda?
Oh yes, did we forget to add C? I, I thought we did that last night, didn't we? Ladies and gentlemen, please be careful.
So this is our newest member of the department, Athena. Athena is a deaf shepherd, and she is a little over halfway through her training and certification process right now, and is doing really well. Her handler Ben Martin, I'll let him tell you a little bit more about her.
Yeah. So she's about, she's about a year old, year of fourteen months, I think. She's a four order narcotics dog, so she's gonna alert and locate meth, coke, heroin. We take our certification on Thursday, and we'll be ready to start working Thursday night on the May core certification. And then in two weeks, we go up to Lincoln City for the Oregon Police Canons Association Conference, and then we'll certify for Oregon Police Canons Association, and then International Police Canons Association. So we'll have three certifications we'll try to maintain for her career.
Very exciting, so remind us of the rules when we engage with a service dog, we are not allowed to pet and snuggle like I wanna do right now. Praying from like, this might happen, because that is all, you're already training, right?
Yeah, yeah, so she's in training, so her, like, general public and stuff like that, when we're interacting with people who aren't gonna be, come up and be a lot better, just because she is trained, she's supposed to be looking for drugs, and that's when she gets her, her good toys, she doesn't get toys at home, she gets to go in home and go to bed when we go home and get some food, that's, that's about as much as she gets when we're home, so when we're out working, that's when she knows she can get her toys, if she finds drugs, and that's when she gets her toys.
Good, welcome to the city of North Bend, Athena.
Alright, so Will, Officer Martin, if you'll come a little forward, we're gonna slowly have them sort of come on the backside as the backdrop, and I'll take a photo.
Alright, so you're gonna help us line up and then bring the dog in for a photo, okay?
Don't wait, hold that, Officer Martin.
Alright. Alright, okay, now everyone looks at me, not the dog. Lena, look at this way, oh yeah, look at that, oh, so perfect, wow. Whoops, oh, sorry, sorry, whoops. Alrighty.
Very cool.
Alright.
Happy the councils that, the police department K nine unit challenge coins with the dog on there right now, so, Chief, is there anything else you wanna say?
Yeah, I just wanted to really you know, we continue to express our very, I mean, just sincere gratitude. There are some very major significant donors here tonight with us that have made this possible for this department, and it is just amazing the community support and the investment that, that everyone has made to make this happen. And I really appreciate it, Officer Martin, the members of this department, it really means a lot to have, to know that we have that and be reminded of the community support that we have here from the city of North Bend, so I just wanna thank you all for coming here tonight and being with us to, to meet Athena, we have some other events coming up. The meet and greet with the donors of this program that are being planned and announced here shortly, and again, have a great night, thank you very much.
I can add one thing, the Coquill Casino is actually going to be hosting a sponsor for the K nine program, and all proceeds for ticket sales will go to the K nine program, it's gonna be on Saturday, November eighth. The doors open up at six PM, and the band that's coming is Red Bull Canyon, it's a country music band, and they play some rock songs as well, so I seem to say, so they are setting that up for us.
Alright, well, first, that was so wonderful, with a bunch of wonderful ceremonial items to sign. Eagles donation, and the Chamber Award, they create that, and then said, me and our new dog. We're gonna go ahead and move into the rest of the council meeting, and the first item on the agenda is the consent calendar, is there a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Okay, but a first from Counselor Hamilton, and second from Counselor Garboden, is there any discussion? Okay, I just always like to add here that the council does do over the consent calendar in the children's work session, and as we did last night, of many of the items on the agenda, so the rest of the portion of the meeting is just our business meeting, so if you want more details on that, you can watch the work session from last night. So we have first, we have second, we'll further discussion, all in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is our public comments, do we have any public comments, E B?
We do not.
We do not, so we'll go ahead and move on to the next one, but always remind people that they can make public comments during the work session, or the city council meeting in person, or remote. The number six is resolution three three seven three, is there a motion from the council?
I move the city council to ratify resolution number three three seven three, accepting the donation of the nineteen thirty-seven federal fire engine from the North Bend Volunteer Firefighters Association for permanent public display from downtown park adjacent to the visitor center.
Well, second.
First, we have Counselor Jones, and a second from Counselor Hamilton, is there any discussion? All in favor for the city council to ratify resolution number three three seven three, accepting the donation of a nineteen thirty-seven Red Bull fire engine from the North Bend Volunteer Firefighters Association for permanent public display at the downtown park adjacent to the visitor center, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven on the agenda is, is an authorization to enter into agreement with Compinet, is there a motion from the council?
I move the city council to authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement with Compinet Incorporated for the Microsoft three sixty-five government tenant migration at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars with funding from the city's approved IT budget.
Second, thank you Counselor Jones, and a first from you, and a second from Counselor Schultz. Is there any further discussion? I just like to say, having done these projects many times, they're huge, they have a long tail, they have multiple different parts. And it's a really good move, going to dot gov, it's, it really changes the security around our information that we provide, so it's a huge, important move. Alright, well, all in favor, the city councils have authorized the city administrator to execute the agreement with Compinet Inc. for the Microsoft three sixty-five government tenant migration at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars of funding from the city's approved IT budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight on the agenda, is there a motion for authorization to install four stationary license plate reader cameras through block safety?
Oh, for sure. I move the city council to approve the contract with clock safety for the place with a four stationary license plate reader camera under a two-year agreement in the amount of twenty-six thousand six hundred dollars, and authorize the city administrator or the police chief to sign the clock safety agreement following review by the city attorney.
Second, first from Counselor Slater, and then second from Counselor Torres. Is there any further discussion? This is also a huge boost for us, and, and a lot of work, there's a lot of work around researching even just these changes, so, you know, I appreciate that diligence. Agreed, and I just like to say, I, I appreciate just everything that the police department does, and all of our public safety, and everything from the K nine unit to the license plate readers sends a message to people that North Bend is tough on crime, we're not missing around, so thank you for doing that for the citizens in North Bend and all of the community, really. So we have our first, and we have our second, so in this part of discussion, I will go ahead then, and all in favor to move the city council to approve the contract for block safety for the placement of four stationary license plate reader cameras under a two-year agreement in the amount of twenty-six thousand six hundred, and authorize the city administrator or police chief to sign the block safety agreement following review by the city attorney, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, is there a motion from number nine on the agenda, approval to contract HGE Architects to landslide architectural services for the visitor center? I move the city council to approve the construction document being for HGE Architects to complete the professional services not to exceed forty-eight hundred forty, forty-eight thousand two hundred.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Alright, we have a first from Counselor Schultz, and a second from Counselor Slater, is there any discussion? I will add that, but I love that the chamber is here tonight seeing us and our former, who really like him director, because I know that it's been a passion of his to have that visitor center moved and just really kind of change the landscape of downtown North Bend, and I feel, I bet you're pretty excited about seeing all of this come together.
I'm happy at work that way, the first time I brought her up, I got shut down, we were out in paradise, and when the price came on it, oh my goodness, I'm not spending that, bud. And eventually, with this group, as we were working, it acknowledged the power of having that in the downtown area both for our businesses and the city's operations, and they could still get them out to the beaches.
Yeah.
So, no, it's a wonderful place to be, and some land is worth it.
More ways that we can get people to stop downtown and invest in our businesses, it's a good thing, we can, I mean, we're gonna really see it all sort of happen quickly now, so. We had our first, our second, we have discussion, all in favor for the city council to approve the instruction and document being for HGE Architects to complete professional services not to exceed forty-eight thousand two hundred, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number ten on the agenda is, is there a motion for consideration of D V. and city phone parcel located under runway thirteen dash thirty-one?
I move the city council to authorize the city attorney to prepare a correction duty for wastewater treatment facility property and a deed conveying the three-point-eight acre parcel under runway thirteen thirty-one to the Coos County Airport District, contingent upon any value established by the council and authorization execution of the deeds by the mayor and the airport district.
Thank you, Counselor Jones.
Sure.
First from Counselor Jones, and a second from Counselor Garboden, any discussion? This is another indication of how political it is for, how we must really work together, and it's not, you see, and most of the time you have to show people the way, not have to work together. It's, I just think this is a, it's a good move, it's not a big one, or some, thank you for all of your diligence on this, and for keeping this a good. Yeah, and hopefully it's noted, we are being good community partners.
Yeah.
For the record. So glad that we can take care of that. Alright, so we had our first, we had our second, any further discussion? All in favor for the city council to authorize the city attorney to prepare the correction deed in the wastewater treatment facility property and a deed conveying the three-point-eight acre parcel under runway thirteen point three one to the Coos County Airport District, contingent upon any value established by the council and authorize execution of the deed by the mayor and the airport district, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, that takes us to eleven, is there a motion for the initiation of vacation proceedings for Twenty Point Road? So just a motion on page eighty-nine, you're not good.
I'll move the city council to organize the vacation proceedings for the Twenty Point Road, establish the date for the public hearing as October fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
Good. First, Counselor Hamilton, and a second from Counselor Garboden. Twenty Point Road is not hard to say, or it is hard to say. So we had our first, we had our second, any further discussion? Just another. On this, okay. Okay, well then, all in favor to move the city council to initiate the vacation proceedings for Twenty Point Road and establish the date for a public hearing as October fourteen, twenty twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve on the agenda, is there a motion for the award of contracted nine river materials for the Virginia Avenue repair project?
Oh, the city council awards the Virginia Avenue repair project to nine river materials in the amount of sixty-one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second. First, we have Counselor Hamilton, and second from Counselor Garboden. Any discussion? All in favor for the city council to award the Virginia Avenue repair project to nine river materials in the amount of sixty-one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen on the agenda is authorization to enter into a three-year intergovernmental agreement with Coos County for the cloud permit, is there a motion from the council on item thirteen?
I move the city council to authorize staff to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Coos County to convert to cloud permits software with a three-year guaranteed cost allocation not to exceed twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars paid incrementally according to the contract.
Second, first from Counselor Slater, a second from Counselor Torres, any discussion? I have one question, which I didn't think of until this morning, I'm sorry. And that was that, is the intention to continue with the cost allocation according to population and not some other basic plan?
As far as the contract goes, yes, that's the population based on the annual allocation, Coos County is still taking the lion's share, because they distribute it not only based on population, but they distribute it amongst different agencies within the county, but our share should remain relatively the same, it must enroll, obviously, in large numbers.
Yes, yeah. I just, some of, some of the intergovernmental agreements can get difficult when the vote is distributed by population, so the cost is distributed not by, you know, there's these things that can happen, so I just wanted to make sure, thank you, I appreciate that.
To say the beauty of this move is we're actually doing better things for our customers, letting people to be more timely, and then part of the write-up is decisions stem from the longstanding dissatisfaction with the state's free emit permitting system which has proven inefficient and costly in practice. So what you're doing is getting some timing, something that works well and connects.
Alright, well, we had our first, our second, and our discussions, so all in favor for the city council to authorize staff to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Coos County to convert the cloud permit software with a three-year guaranteed cost allocation not to exceed twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars to convert the cloud permit software with a three-year guaranteed cost allocation not to exceed twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars paid incrementally according to the contract schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, number fourteen on the agenda is there, um, a motion for the authorization to apply for a community renewable energy grants? I move the city council authorize the application of community, uh, renewable energy grant from the Oregon Department of Energy and Economic Development and provide a letter of support.
Sure.
Okay, first we've got Councilwoman Slater, any second, um, no, sorry. Schultz later. Uh, first from Councilor Schultz and a second from Councilwoman Slater.
Amen.
There we go. Any discussion? I love this one. It's another great one. Yeah.
Let's do it.
Thank you. All shows all the good work of the staff coming together here. So, um, I will go ahead then. We had our first or second. Our discussion, all in favor, um, for the city councils to authorize the application for community renewable energy grant from Oregon Department of Energy and Economic Development and provide a letter of support, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Um, so fifteen, is there a, um, motion to authorize the purchase of five hundred and forty tons of aggregate? Number fifteen, just got that one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move the city council authorize staff to purchase five hundred and forty tons of aggregate delivered to the bio-solite site, Night River Materials at the price of twenty-six dollars and fifty cents per ton for a total of fourteen thousand three hundred and ten dollars.
First from, um, Councilor Hamilton and a second from Grabode. Any discussion? We want to talk about bio-solids.
Oh, yeah.
We'll add some of the great information last night by Rob Dunham, would you have appreciated? We had our first, our second, um, all in favor for the city council to uh, authorize staff to purchase five hundred and forty tons of aggregate delivered to the bio-solite Night River Material at a price of twenty-six point five zero per ton for a total of fourteen thousand three hundred and ten dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that was fifteen. That takes us to number sixteen. Um, there was no action needed to discuss from executive session. So we'll go move into seventeen, which is our city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, the city administrator's report has been distributed via the website, our social media platform. Also emailed to, uh, news media. So it's positively helpful. I want to give, um, two shout-outs. Uh, one is to, uh, North Bend Fire Department and also, um, our, uh, Bay Cities Ambulance. We had a, uh, fire over the weekend on Hayes Street. Uh, our fire personnel, uh, were able to locate a kitten and a dog and immediately provided medical assistance, transferred it over to the ambulance, uh, where they did oxygen. Uh, there we transported both pet via ambulance with police and fire in tow to, uh, Morgan Animal Hospital. And, um, uh, we are proud to say that both are anticipated full recovery. It just shows you, um, the care, um, that our department, our agencies and working together actually, um, uh, really benefit our community. Also, uh, today we had a, um, a little bit of a scare with a, uh, bomb incident, explosive device incident at, uh, Goodwill. And yet again, uh, our police department along, uh, with assistance from Coos Bay Police Department and Oregon State Patrol Bomb Squad, um, efficiently, effectively got in there, made sure everybody was safe, um, cordoned off the areas that needed to, uh, be cordoned off. Um, and then has since, um, uh, detonated, uh, the, uh, device. It just shows you, um, the overall cooperation, um, no harm, no foul, uh, no injuries. Um, and it all came down, uh, based on the training that our staff have. So shout-outs to both of those. And, um, the rest is in the further, um, report. Come back to you about that.
Right, thank you. We appreciate you making that available in all modalities so people can see into that. And that would bring us to, um, our committee reports. Do we have any committee votes?
Anything that, uh, committee-wise is there will be a charter committee meeting tomorrow, Wednesday. It'll be here in the council chambers at five thirty. Yep, um, and the public's always encouraged to attend.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on to number nine, which is for council, no, nineteen. Nineteen. I, um, I have to keep taking them on and off, but, uh, between me and my glasses, please. Number nineteen, our council comments. We'll go ahead and start with Council Jones.
So, I just, it's such a pleasure and also there's, it's not to be understated how incredible the interdepartment, interte- you know, teams across the county and cities. Um, you know, the only thing we have is our collective drive to work together. That's literally the only way we can take stuff to network. So it's a real pleasure to see how deeply developed that is on this. It's right.
Birthday boy.
All right, well, let me fill up my list. Uh, no, I want to just give a shout-out to, uh, you know, uh, the city manager to get on about the, uh, fire police, uh, things that are going on. Um, I've noticed, you know, there's been a big uptick in accidents, you know, not just in North Bend, but in the whole area we live in here. And so, you know, I don't think so much of, I guess, what do you call it, defensive driving? You know, like pay attention. I mean, there's been some accidents out on one-on-one, which, you know, but, uh, I know that you guys have crossed over into the other territories and helped out there, which is really good. Uh, obviously the dog is awesome to finally see that he's here. And, or she, yeah, she got fur, they're just, so, uh, and the fire with the animals, I mean, uh, you know, some people don't understand that. Some people seem to be like over with them, but, uh, I mean, taking a cat and talking from a fire straight to the ambulance to Morgan is pretty cool because I know, uh, if that was certain people's bets, you know, they'd be very appreciative of that. So, um, so, oh, the other thing I was sitting here and, you know, like to give shout-outs where needed. And last night was pretty amazing to see that the old Ford was a car, was brand new, five thousand dollars in nineteen eighty. So I was sitting here and looking at Macy has scanned in thirty years of city council meeting meetings. I'm sure there's some interesting stuff that was talked about in North Bend for the last thirty years. So I expect the full record, all the highlights. So, thank you, Macy, and, uh,
Thank you, Macy.
Keep up the good work, City North Bend. And you didn't want to make any introductions.
You have some people in the audience.
Oh, my parents are either from Wisconsin.
Oh, very nice.
Um, I just want to thank again that the, the canine dog is very exciting. And so seeing her and how young she looks and how excited she is, just thank you all, everyone who donated to get us there. The things for big, big checks and little checks and just people who are passionate about it. Cause I do think that just seeing animals in, in jobs and just as comfort animals, uh, is really important. So that's really exciting. So thank you for that. And then, uh, school started, just be careful when you're driving and, uh, people crossing the streets. There's, and I feel like there's been a uptick of people getting hit as they cross the street, which is really scary. Yeah. Okay, Councilwoman Slater, you got some comments?
Yeah, well, first begin with, uh, uh, thank Engels for their contribution. That's truly significant, but it sort of shows the community focus on getting this thing together, how we're all part of the same team. And truly appreciate what they did there. And, and the Bay Area Chamber Congress honoring us, well, actually they have a true sense of community. So they're honoring all those businesses and things that go. Sometimes it's, have you been here five years? And, oh, well, that's good. You're still making money. But, uh, I, I think that's an important thing to celebrate. As I mentioned before, you should never miss an opportunity to celebrate. Um, want to talk a little about Twenty Point Road as we've, um, built that up in, uh, nineteen ninety-one. And, and I'm thinking it was sort of paved to begin with, but I think we added additional, no, did we pave it in that one?
First part, when it was a boat ramp, and I think that was eighty-six.
Okay, wait a minute. Don't get ahead of me.
Okay.
I'm, I'll come back to you. I appreciate you, you were here too.
You want to describe for those who don't know where it's at, is it the end of the?
Well, it's, uh, it actually, if, if you were by the, uh, seven eleven and, and went out, it went out all the way to the edge of the bay, you know, the, the channel out there that way. We had it paved. We got, uh, a grant for the boat ramp. We put the, the boat ramp in, which a lot of people were enthused about. Although they completely lumped the stuff coming in. So it became a continuously with, uh, so can we flush this stuff out? We got a grant from Deals DC to put in the picnic areas and the windbreaks along there to make that. And we had a little connecting path between them. Then there was a service club, I believe stepped up, which I'm thinking is the Kiwanis would put money into finishing that path down the way, uh, Jason, through the road. So you can actually do your bike riding and your walking and whatever out of the road if you wanted to. But main line was what we had was a lot of people running, a lot of people biking. And a lot of people just coming out to either put their boat in or to have a picnic or do whatever that way. It was very well received. Um, then I got to tell you, one of the, uh, probably most interesting things to me was, uh, in a mid or, or later portion of the nineties, we had a, uh, B twenty-four and a B seventeen World War Two bombers that came into the airport. And that was a beautiful place to be. They took them landing, you know, as they were coming in. So it was a tremendous asset to the community. Lots of people enjoyed it. I understand. I truly understand the issues with security and that which came up. And it's been, uh, closed off for, uh, well over twenty years at this particular point. So it makes sense to, uh, get rid of the road and enable the airport to continue. But I'm, I appreciate what all the airport has done and is doing for creating a significant commercial operation for us. But that was a neat asset that the community and all of you were part of. And it, uh, it worked well during the good day.
Thank you, Councilwoman Slater. Councilwoman Torres, no problem. All right, that gives me extra time then. Um, I want to say, uh, thank you, Chamber, for this award. This is really cool here with the heritage board for our hundred and twenty-second birthday. So we appreciate you taking them to consider best and to your consideration and um, receiving that tonight. That was pretty special. And it was so wonderful to be in Pat's over here, too. Um, so thank you also for mentioning that school is in. Um, I'm in, in service, uh, swat for my job and the students already there. It's the most, uh, number of kids that we've had in dorms in a long time, pre-COVID. So we're, that means we're probably at four hundred, a little bit over. So they're really easy to spot in the community, like the kids that are coming in, like if you go to Walmart right now or, um, Walgreens, like, you know, especially like this week, you can see them there with their parents, like getting their refrigerator and their hot ramen and all that sort of stuff. So like say something. I'm, I'm going to ask you, if you do think somebody out there and be like, hey, are you moving into swat, like strike up a conversation. I was a parent that was dropping off a kid in another state a couple of weeks ago. Um, is, is like really, it's always scary. So when people are reaching out and just saying like, welcome to the community, um, you know, say hello to them because they are, it's, they add a lot of value to our community. We have worked really hard to, uh, have an international program that brings kids in from all over the world. Um, and they just add, these kids are putting, not, are not just from Oregon, but all over. Um, and they compete on our basketball team or, you know, we have so many, uh, different sporting events events now. They use our North Bend pool for the swim team. And, uh, um, I think that it's just important to recognize also the impact that they have on our economy. And so we've got four hundred kids. Ask Dutch Brothers and the pizza place and the seven eleven and the movie theater if they notice a different one of the students around town. So, um, just asking to make sure they can be, um, are welcome. And just one last birthday, thank you to Councilor Hamilton and really to all of you, because I like to a couple of times a year to remind everybody that, uh, like myself, you are not paid. So you're here as a volunteer tonight. Um, and the, it's not just sitting here at the VAS, doing your job as a city councilor, but I know that you're on the committees. I know that you talk to constituents sometimes for hours on the phone. So it's just not two hours a couple of times a month is all the other work that you put in on a voluntary basis. So for all of you who are volunteering, thank you. I appreciate that. All right. So that's all I have for comments. And that will take us to other business. We have nine. And then we have in urban, one item on the urban renewal, correct? Yes. So would you like me to go during this meeting and go straight into the urban renewal?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Council meeting adjourned. And I'll go ahead and open the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency meeting, regular session agenda for September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, seven forty-three here in the council chambers. Patrick Paul, the meeting's over. I'll ask our city reporter to ask her, you are a commissioners for what?
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Grabode.
Here.
Commissioner Eaglekey.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Slater.
Still here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Thank you. All right. So we have any public comments this evening? We do have one public comment. Okay. All right, we have one public comment that you are getting. And I always like to say, um, we thank everybody for participating in public comment this evening. Public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak and everybody takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Law, this is not time for dialogue, rather it's time for us to listen to you. Our executive directors, city reporter are taking any notes, um, of any action if needed. Um, and so I have a public comments form.
What?
He's already found it. Okay. And, um, so it's not here. And there are no notes. So we'll just go ahead and hang on to that with his name, in case he does want to come back and say something at the next meeting. All right, um, so then we'll go ahead and we have one, uh, we have an action item for the approval of minutes from August twelfth. Is there a motion from the commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Sorry. Um, and we had a first, second, any discussion? All in favor to approve the, uh, you are a minutes from August twelfth as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the executive director. Uh, report for your, is there any?
Just a, uh, quick update for you and the, uh, public. Uh, we will have a public hearing on the uh, plan amendment for the urban renewal plan. Uh, notification has gone out into the utility bills as part of our requirements to educate the public, uh, and that will occur, uh, in two weeks at your scheduled meeting. Uh, we also, uh, are continuing to move forward on, uh, the behind-the-scenes, uh, um, efforts on the annex so that, um, we can go forward with that project. Uh, we have some very nice, uh, musical chairs occurring downtown. Business is moving and expanding into larger locations. But what's even nicer is we've already gotten the places they're moving out back to.
Wow.
Uh, and in fact, uh, in the former, uh, Pedele metal, um, uh, within about a month, we should be able to eat the new sushi uh, restaurant downtown. And so, uh, we're looking forward to that. So lots of great things happening for this time. Thank you.
Right, thanks for that. And if you have any, uh, action, uh, any resulting from executive session? So we'll go ahead. And so I'm going to go ahead and turn the meeting.